19th at 7:02 PM and this is the Riverside School District 96 regular school board meeting. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi.
Present.
Ms. Gunn. Here. Mr. Olick?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Here.
Okay, a form is present.
All right, thank you. We are going to start with our public hearing on the tax levy, 2025 property tax levy. Wait, no, I'm sorry. I skipped it. Public comment is first. So, the Board welcomes and encourages community engagement at all board meetings. Therefore, time is allotted at the beginning and end of each meeting for audience members to address the board. We kindly ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Please note that this is a board meeting in public and not a public forum or town hall. The board does not directly respond to questions or comments during the meeting but may ask the superintendent to follow up with you as necessary. With that Kathy, we have one public comment. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce it. Ms. Sharma? Mr. Sharma? Mr. Sharma?
Can you hear me? Is this audible?
It doesn't amplify, it only goes through our broadcast.
Okay. Good evening, Board members. My name is Kishet Sharma. I also go by K, so please feel free to call me K. This is my wife, Abruta Sharma. We are co-founders of Launchpad RoboLab. It's a robotics coaching company for kids. And we are here today because, you know, we believe that the kids of Riverside District 96 deserves the world-class robotics coaching programs and support. As you, you know, discuss the strategic plans for the upcoming future, we would like you to think about this, that American kids do not compete fairly against their Asian and European peers because they don't have the access to the same kinds of robotics programs and they don't end up doing so well in international competitions. We saw this firsthand as parents of our daughter who's now a high schooler, but we have seen over the past number of years how she struggled to get the same kind of support and access to robotics education that when we go to these international competitions, we see kids from Asia. Just as one example, Malaysia has robotics programs starting in the early grades of elementary school. So when they get to these international competitions and they're competing against kids from the US, they do far better because they've been learning this for years and years. Over a number of years, I, you know, we first got into this as parents trying to help our own daughter and then bit by bit, year after year, we saw how the difference was in terms of the support that other kids were getting and we thought we needed to do more. So this year, we finally started, we founded the Launchpad RoboLab. We come from technology background. Both of us are engineers and MBA and we felt we had the right background to help our kids. Hence, we founded Launchpad RoboLab. Just in the 2025 season alone, we've been able to achieve, or rather, we've been able to help our kids achieve something that none of the US teams have done in the past. We had an all-girls team that reached semifinals of Robosports in America's Open, a competition where they were competing against teams from Asia and Europe, including Romania, Japan, Korea, Vietnam, all countries that have a long history and tradition of doing well at these competitions. And our team, you know, won against them, reached the semifinals that no other US team has been able to do. We want, we have created programs for kids throughout elementary, middle school, and high school where we teach them how to program autonomous robots. I brought one example with me here today. It's made of all Lego parts, something that the kids of young age as well as even, you know, middle school and high schooler can build easily. And they program the various levels of complex routines to make the robot function on its own, carry out certain tasks or challenges. As far as this one, which has a camera sitting on top that helps detect ping pong balls of different colors and depending on the colors, takes a specific action trying to maneuver the competing robots on the other side of the field in a robo tennis game. We would love to offer, you know, a demo of and more information on our program at a time and place of convenience and would really hope to continue the conversation at a later time. I'll pause for in case there are any questions or comments before we turn it back to you.
Yeah, at this point, for public comment, we don't do back and forth on it, but I do see that you requested a response from the district. So would you like to communicate more with Dr. Ryan Toye here and see just kind of what you're thinking and how it might fit in with what we're doing?
Sounds great.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the context there. Thank you. Is that it? Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Okay. So that moves us into the public hearing for the 2025 tax levy. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to open the public hearing on the 2025 property tax levy? Kathy, please call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Olick?
Hi.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Okay. Hearing is open.
Okay. And you said there was one person that would like to make comment? At least one person that would like to make comment?
Good evening. Just because you guys should have some feedback on this, even though it could be, it can be difficult to see payments go up every year, I continue to support a tax increase at the rate of, sorry, tax levy at the rate of inflation. However, I also believe that the district needs to work within the guardrails of maintaining the traditional 40% fund balance. And this also may mean that should the guardrail of a maximum tax increase at inflation and that 40%, it may mean cuts or reductions are necessary to stay within those two bounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to comment? Nope, everyone's here for the kids. All right. With that, is there a motion for the Board of Education to adjourn the public hearing for the 2025 property tax levy?
Second.
Kathy, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Olick?
Hi.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Hi.
Okay, the hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda for tonight, are there any recommendations for change? Nope. Okay. With that, we will jump into the superintendent's report and I will hand it over to Dr. Ryan Toye.
All right, and I'm very excited to introduce Kesmira Gorman, our principal from Blythe Park School, who has some students with her tonight to talk about mathematics, I believe.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Ryan Toye and Ms. Perino, thank you so much for having Blythe Park here and allowing us just to share a little bit about what we're doing this year specifically in the area of mathematics. So at Blythe Park, the students have been practicing what we call lead behaviors with the goal of improving their skills and level of knowledge in the area of mathematics. So lead behaviors are specific, high-leverage actions that are both predictive of achieving a goal, but they're also directly influenceable by students and teachers. Although sometimes our ultimate measure is to see improvement on some type of assessment, whether it's a unit test or the MAP assessment or the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, we're showing students that the best way to track improvement is to count how many times they engage in behaviors or actions that help them practice and improve their skills. So we have students from kindergarten through fifth grade and they're just going to share a little bit about the lead behavior that they've selected for their grade level and what they're doing with it. So.
I'm Sophia.
And I'm Bryce. In fifth grade, our lead behaviors using the three-read strategy.
We practice the three-read strategy by reading the math problem three times. Each time, we underline an important detail about the problem. First, we underline the topic. Then, we circle the math facts. Last, we underline the question.
Why is the three-read important, you may ask? The three-read strategy is important because it helps us understand the question better. It also helps us catch all the details and it gives us more time to understand the problem. It highlights the important information so we know what to look at. Every time we use the three-read strategy, we transfer a duck into a jar.
Every week, we see how many ducks we transferred and we update the goal board so we see our progress. Our school's theme is leveling up this year. When we practice using the three-read, we get closer to our goals, which is like leveling up in a video game.
Hello, my name is Zoe Blackburn and I'm in fourth grade.
Hello, my name is Sloane Capillera and I'm also in fourth grade.
Our lead behavior is practicing multiplication facts one through 11.
We are doing this lead behavior so we can read the multiplication facts quickly and accurately.
We practice this in school by doing different activities such as timed multiplication factor quizzes, multiplication games, and fluency flights in our ready.
This lead behavior is important because we do multi-digit and multi-step computations in fourth grade. Knowing the facts with fluency and accuracy will support and help us do large computations.
Hi, my name is Margaret.
Hi, my name is Albert.
In third grade, we are working on addition and subtraction fluency for our lead behavior. Here are some ways they are shown.
We do math, but it's fluency flight and bump. Fluency flight is an activity to do on our ready. You can do this every day to practice your facts, but you can only do it once a day. You can unlock our links and upgrade our links and do activities.
Bump is a game where there are different spots and you roll dice. You add or multiply the dice together and the answer you have is on the chart and you put a counter on the chart where the answer is. Our lead behavior is important because we can practice our math facts to help us get better at math, even at home.
Our lead behavior is important because we won't get stuck with little problems if we know our math facts.
Hi, my name is Franklin and I am in second grade.
Hello, my name is Arwen and I'm also in second grade.
In second grade, our math lead behavior is using tools and pictures to show our math thinking.
We have been learning about place value and how to add two-digit numbers with regrouping.
Our class practices the lead behavior by using our tens blocks to represent numbers.
We can use our tools to help understand regrouping.
Using tools and pictures help us see the numbers being regrouped. It is also helpful to move the tools.
We think this is an important lead behavior because we can be hands-on with our learning.
Hi, my name is Awslot.
And my name is Jack.
The first graders have been working on using different strategies to solve addition, using different strategies to solve addition and subtraction problems.
Some examples are using a ten frame, using number bonds, drawing a math picture, and using math cubes.
We have been working on sharing our thinking with our classmates and talking about the different ways to solve problems.
It is important to show and explain our math thinking because it helps us better understand how numbers are related.
Thank you.
In school, we are seeing numbers in a different ways.
We know. We can. See numbers. All day. At school.
Thank you. We also have a really quick video just to show you what we're talking about. Charles hasn't queued up.
There are three seals. Four more seals drawing them. Now, I mean, how many seals are there now? We're learning the nearby double rules. I use the equation of the nearby but doubles on dick is four plus four equals eight. And I knew one was eight minus one, it would equal seven. Answer.
Thank you so much for letting us be here and presenting you about lead behaviors.
Thanks, Ms. Gorman. Sometimes our board members have questions. So any questions for any of the students here that did an amazing job presenting all this information? Thank you.
The topic itself was pretty straightforward, but I'm very curious, the ducks. Why ducks? Is the duck, like, did you get to pick the duck? Or how did the duck come to be?
Because one of the fifth-grade teachers' husband's work at a school and one of the coworkers placed a little duck on his desk every day.
Got it. Okay. I figured there had to be a tag or somewhere, just a fun thing to do. I don't know.
They count how many times they practice it every week. And so when they score it every week on the weekly board.
Yeah.
That's what they're scoring. They're scoring how many times they practice something.
Okay.
Because the fact that they, we want them to focus on the fact that the practice is the important part, not necessarily what you get on the test.
Yeah.
It's the habit of practice.
Yep. Yep. Is the, I mean, from the video and everything, it's more of a question for you. This is just like a foundational strategy that we're using within the curriculum? Or is this like an extra layer on that we're doing?
It's just, you know, it's just a strategy that we're doing at Blythe Park that we really wanted to work on improving our proficiency and our skill and achievement levels in the area of mathematics. And we want it to be very intentional. It comes from, this comes from a business model I learned in a professional learning session for administrators, but it makes a lot of sense in the idea that they talk about the whirlwind, about everything we do in the course of a week to try to do our jobs. And then sometimes, and it's all important work, but we're always busy. And sometimes when we do those things, our strategic goals get pushed aside because we're trying to get everything that we get done. Like, you know, if you think about anybody's job, like your emails, your phone calls, your meetings, whatever. And then that strategic goal is like hanging there. This puts it front and center every week so that we make sure that every week we practice that behavior because we know it's going to lead to improvement.
So this was a building-level strategy, like board speak, building-level strategy to target something at your school that you wanted to try to improve on? Okay, all right. Very neat. You all enjoying math?
Yeah.
I figured that would be a yes if you were here, so. Well, thank you for coming out. That was a very good presentation. You all did a wonderful job. It can be a little nerve-wracking getting in front of all these people and speaking, so you did a great job.
You guys did a great job. Thank you so much.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can continue with the fun stuff. And I know young children and perhaps need to go home for bedtime or homework or whatever else it may be, so you are welcome to leave. You're also welcome to stay if you'd like to do that. The next item under the superintendent's report is our board member appreciation. And I, we have some gifts here, I think designed mostly by our art teachers. But very excited to share all of this with all of you. And I know I'm also lucky enough to be a recipient, even though I'm not a board member. But thank you all. It's board member appreciation day, week, and truly, this is a job that there aren't enough thank yous for the many, many, many hours of volunteer time that you put in as our elected official Board of Education members here in District 96. So tonight was also just a great example of the wonderful things happening in our classrooms that you make our reality. So thank you so much.
Oh, chocolates. There it is. Okay, I was looking for them.
And if you feel like we have a minute, because Molly Castor is here and thought maybe it'd be nice to take a quick photo, maybe in front of the You Make Hauser Shine. So that's a sign from the Hauser student.
All right.
And you have the card signed by our staff member. So thank you so much.
Do you want us to get a picture now?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to edit? How would you like this all done out?
I would like, you can grab like your little ornaments or whatever. I need a picture. Yeah, that's pretty neat. I'd like to know how they made that. Yes. Temporarily replace that on our website. It's a pretty colorful one. So cool. Okay. Have your ornaments? One, two, three. Thank you, guys. All right. Thank you, Molly.
Google it. What map looks like this?
All right. We will keep moving forward. We have two groups here that are here tonight to present to the Board of Education about our next strategic planning process. So I'm going to first welcome Dr. Gary Zabelka, who's here from Educational Leadership Solutions. And I don't think board members have necessarily met Gary before, but currently Gary and Don White from Educational Leadership Solutions have been helping us with our Living the Plan portion of our strategic plan. They were not involved with us from the beginning but have been very much involved with us in the years since the initial development. So I'm going to turn it over to Gary, to Dr. Zabelka, I should say.
Good evening, Board. First of all, Toye, it's a tough act to follow the first through the fifth graders. I'll do my best to try to keep your attention for the next few minutes. My name is Gary Zabelka. As Dr. Ryan Toye mentioned, I'm a lifelong educator. I've been in the profession 45-plus years. I've served as a teacher, principal, and superintendent. And in my years of retirement, I've served as a consultant and a mentor of many, many superintendents. Actually, Dr. Ryan Toye was one of my mentees. I hope you don't mind my sharing. She was also one of my students when I was a professor at Loyola University when she was getting her superintendent's endorsement. So not that I deserve any of the credit, she's done most of it on her own. And anyway, it's good to be back with her and to be before you this evening. In 2020, when many people were locked in due to COVID, three colleagues, two colleagues and I decided we are going to start a business. And as such, we took our collective wealth of knowledge as administrators and superintendents and thought we would develop a process for strategic planning that we felt would be, you know, widely used by districts. And I'm pleased to say that in the four and a half years that we've been together as a business, we've grown to the point where we've got a dozen associates or so that work together with us in providing strategic planning for districts across the state. And we've done upwards of 25 strategic plans for districts around the state during that period of time. A little bit about our model as far as how we approach strategic planning with school districts. We like to, first of all, keep the distinction between what we call Phase One and Phase Two of our process whereby Phase One is a part that primarily rests with the Board's governance responsibilities. In other words, as members of the Illinois Association of School Boards, this actual slide, with the exception of the bubbles on the right, belongs to the Illinois Association of School Boards. And they say this is what ideal governance looks like in a school district where you have those bottom tiers, the mission, the vision, the values, beliefs, and the district goals, basically are the foundations of what the Board's responsibility is. In other words, the Board is the one that sets the direction for the In other words, the board is the one that sets the direction for the district by determining what those should be. Oftentimes, and in accordance with our model, we recommend that. You do that in conjunction with your community. You enlist community members to work with you to help develop the mission, the vision, the values, beliefs, and the district goals. And I'll talk about what that process will look like in just a bit. That's what we call creating the strategic plan. That's just those basic parts of it. However, as many of you may know, with a strategic plan, those pieces are the directional elements of the strategic plan. It's the pieces that follow that are the most important pieces, which are the action plans, the timelines, the specific aspects that happen. Those are the pieces that then determine the superintendent's goals, the principal and building goals, the classroom and teacher goals, and even so far as the student goals as far as how much they are promoted, excuse me, and embraced throughout the district to truly accomplish those goals that occur in the process at that lower part in those blue levels. So we've got two different phases. The development of those basic aspects and then actually developing the action plans. You'll notice that the development of the action plans takes place with the administrators for the most part. As school board members, you want to make sure from a governing standpoint that you've got the right pieces in place to provide direction to your administration. But then the actual living the plan, the actual action plans and timelines, measures of success and so on are determined by the administrators. They are still reported to the board so that you have full knowledge of everything that is going on in the district. It's just the way that we keep the separation of responsibilities between the board's governance and the administrator's implementation of the plan. You've got a flow chart. I know you've seen the handouts on these pieces. The flow chart describes what we call that Phase 1, the development of the mission, the vision, the core values, and the goals. And that is one that, rather than looking at this slide, I've broken down because this is a piece that I think you would like to see the most as far as what does this look like in actual practice? Well, first of all, we believe that you should engage your community in this process by enlisting anywhere from, we say 30 to 45 here. There's no magic number there. If you wanted to have a few more people involved in the process, but to involve anywhere from, we can even say 30 to 50 stakeholders. And that would be some of your parents, some of your community members, staff members, administrators. We even believe students should be involved, okay? Maybe not your younger students that you had here tonight, but some of your older students. In fact, we typically recommend sixth or seventh grade students. The reason why we target sixth and seventh grade versus eighth graders is because eighth graders will be short-lived in the school district. They will be graduating fairly soon. The sixth and seventh graders, if they're involved, are going to be around for at least a year or two to see the benefits of the work that they've contributed toward. This core stakeholder group is a group that would meet at least three, possibly four times to develop, or actually in your case, since your district already has a mission, a vision, the core values, and strategic goals, would meet to review all of those aspects and make sure that they are still warranted and valid. Those meetings typically consist of about three-hour meetings. So we're looking at roughly three, three-hour meetings that are typically held in the school district in a room similar to this with tables that we would then take those 30 to 50 people and have them at tables, cross-section with some staff members, some parents, students, and so on at each of the tables so that they could have conversations with each other about your district's mission, vision, et cetera. What they will be doing is that they'll be reviewing what you have to make sure that it's still valid and relevant and if there are any changes that need to take place. In the meantime, we also inform and educate this entire group as to what is a mission statement supposed to look like? What is a mission statement supposed to, what's the purpose of a mission statement? And a vision statement, et cetera? So we make an educational process for them as well. And it's one where they're highly engaged. Basically, that picture that you see at the bottom is not an actual picture, but it might as well be. That's pretty much what it looks like. But we're engaged in the process where we have the 30 to 50 people all at tables like that, talking with each other about the different aspects that we're looking to create. At the same time, and oftentimes even before we pull together that group, we also provide a survey that we can send out to your staff. We can also send that survey out to your entire community, your parents, et cetera, that will give you feedback and data about what they currently think about your current practices here in the school district. So for example, do people feel that your academics are rigorous enough? Do they feel that students' needs are being met? Do they feel that your facilities are adequate? It's basically a satisfaction survey on all of those pieces, typically somewhere between 25 and 35 questions long, that we ask as many people as are members of your district, whatever stakeholder position they may be in as constituents, to go ahead and complete that survey. We compile that data and then we share that back with this group that's working on your strategic plan. That way, we have somewhat of a baseline as to how does your community feel about different things that the district is doing? Are they satisfied with your academics, your financials? Again, facilities, communication, those kinds of things. And we ask questions about that. This questionnaire, by the way, is one that although we've got a template for, we actually work with your administrative team and/or board members to ask the questions that you would like to have answered. As long as we're surveying, we can customize that survey in any way that you'd like so that we could answer the questions that we'd like to have answered so we can get good data to take a look at. Your district currently has these things in place. As I look behind you, you see your Empowering Learners for Life. You see your mission statement. You see your vision statement. These would be the pieces. Again, you're a district. You've got these things in place. As Dr. Ryan Twain mentioned, my partner and I have been working with your district's leadership team to make sure that this is still being embraced by that leadership team and then hopefully back in the buildings as well. But the whole purpose of sharing this piece here now is to say that all of this would need to be reviewed. Is this what we still see is the vision that you have here at Riverside? And if it is, great, we can leave it. We can leave components of it. And yet, at the same time, as we've done this work with other districts before, sometimes I say, you know what? That vision was exactly what we needed five years ago, but at this point, we may be looking at a different vision. And we work with the entire group to determine what direction do we want to go. And basically, we would facilitate those conversations with them in a large group setting. First, as small groups, and then pulling that group together for a consensus to see that we're working together to accomplish what the group would like to have. And we do that for your mission and your vision, and then also for your core values. Basically, a final product of the work that we do, and you've got one that looks similar to this, basically looks something like this. You know, some refer to this as a strategic plan on a page. This is another district from North Cook, actually. And you can see there, they've got a motto, they've got their mission, they've got their vision, and then they have their strategic goals. That's that Phase 1 part. And again, your core stakeholder group that we'd be working with, that 30 to 50 people, would basically develop this. We also have our own graphic artist on staff that we would then create a new logo, not a new logo per se, because you've got, we wouldn't touch the Riverside logo. We know that that's sacred. Yet at the same time, create a new visual, a new graphic for you, for your district and the mission, vision, belief statements, and the strategic goals. This is a part of the conversation then as well. And again, much of this has reached through that survey, and that is how is the district currently conforming? These perform, these are the goal areas that your district currently has. You've got student growth and achievement, you've got learning environment, high-quality staff, family-community partnership, and stewardship of resources. We'd have to look at, are those still the same five areas that we'd like to see your district address? Now, I will be one to say that in being one that has studied missions, visions, and those kinds of things for organizations, not only educational, but also corporate organizations, your best organizations don't typically change their missions and their visions and their core values very often, okay? So I recognize that in sharing this, that you may say, we're going to leave all of those things the same. And if that's the case, then as long as the whole group also buys into that, if we can make that case collectively as a group, then the challenge is determining what are going to be those strategic goals for those next three to five years, if that were all to remain the same. So you're in a good spot as a district that you've got these things in place, but do you want to leave them in place as they are? Or are you going to look at potentially changing them? And we work with whatever the group consensus is. By the way, our definition of consensus is one that although everyone may not totally agree with whatever it is that we come up with, people can live with it, okay? It's basically what our definition is. So although it may not be exactly the way one likes it, if they can live with it, then that's where we reach consensus. Because what we've noticed working with 30 to 50 people, it's challenging to get to consensus, but we do it every time to get to our final products. Moving right along, we developed then the new goal areas and the new goals for each of those major areas that are identified for your district. And then we look at alignment. We want to make sure that your mission, your vision, your core values, and your goals all recognized in alignment as a direction that the district wants to go. Again, another sample of what a final product looks like utilizing our process. And the final Phase 1 product comes to the board for acceptance. Remember I said that that's a board's responsibility and governance is making sure you've approved the mission, the vision, the core values, and the strategic goals? That's when the board has approved those things that we begin that Phase 2 part, and that is developing the action plans for those goals. Those action plans also include timelines and then performance indicators so that you've got measures of success built into the action plans moving forward. So you've got the plan. Here we say, now what? And here's where, as administrators, we ask, what are those action steps that are needed to accomplish those goals that were set forth by ultimately the board by the approval of that plan? We've got a list of any questions that basically you can see how this takes one down the road of developing those action plans. You know, so what are the actions that are needed to achieve those strategic plan goals? What measures are we going to use? What resources are you going to need in order to take action? What's the timeline on these things? What are we doing in the first year? What are we doing in the second, third, et cetera, years? All of those pieces become part of that Living the Strategic Plan, that second phase. And this is actually a lot of the work that we're doing now with your current leadership team and Dr. Ryan Twain. What that can look like, and this actually resembles one of your goals, and that is hiring talented, invested staff. You've got one that looks very similar to that, and that is action steps, the measures of success, the resources, and then the timelines for completion. Okay, so that's just one sample for one goal, what an action plan can look like. And that's only one part of that goal's action plan, just to show you how specific it can get. Although the board's not involved in creating this, the board does ultimately see this as they're kept abreast as to how the district is moving forward with those goals. So basically, that encompasses our entire process. Looking at a potential tentative timeline. We're looking at, you know, if the board were to make a decision, realizing you may not be making it tonight, but even in December, possible kicking off the process in January or February, or February of '26, getting the core stakeholder group together, developing the survey that we'd like to create. I will also mention, again, those three meetings that we do have with the core stakeholder group. That's a relatively quick process. And we do that intentionally because if you're asking people to give up their time to be here, to volunteer, to be a part of a process like this, you don't want to belabor it. We are very efficient in our use of time, and we expedite the process not too quickly, but at a speed that we feel is just right so that the process doesn't linger on for months and months, which oftentimes can't be the case. March, April would be when the action plan work would start. And actually, I've got a colleague that does that work. I would be the main facilitator for that Phase 1 part. I work closely with our other person that does the Living the Strategic Plan piece. She wasn't able to make it here tonight, but she is high-energy level, a lot of experience as a school leader that is skilled at creating the action plans and timelines. So then we're looking at roughly May, reporting out, reporting back to the board where things are. Actually, June, and then July 1, implementing your new plan. So overall, that's been a quick snapshot, if you will, of our process. Is there any, are there any questions that I could answer for anybody?
So I have just a quick question.
Sure, please.
When you were talking about the components of the focus, the initial group
Yes.
of 30 to 45.
Yes.
But it said three to seven board members?
Yes.
So how will we avoid any problems with open meetings acting?
You know what, actually, it's a transparent process.
Okay.
Although we invite those who participate to be a part of it. If somebody wanted to watch it, they could, they just don't participate.
So you post it as an open meeting?
We would post it as an open meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is different than how we did it before. We just had two.
Right.
Yeah. No, we believe actually if all seven board members wanted to participate, we encourage that as much as possible. We recognize that oftentimes schedules don't allow for that. But we feel this should be a wide-open process. There's nothing hidden here. And, you know, even the people that are selected to be a part of this group, which by the way, we work closely with you and your teams to select that group. Oftentimes, we ask on the survey, should the survey go out before the process even begins? We would ask, are you interested in serving as a member of this core stakeholder group? And we put an asterisk there that says, will require three to four three-hour meetings in the evening that you must commit to. And if they're willing to participate, then we take a look at those names of those people. Did a presentation like this the other night, and somebody said, would you take just anybody? What if you've got, you know, a negative soul, if you will, in the community that wants to be a part of the process? We've had that before. We say, you know what, invite them. Because basically, the power of the group oversees any particular vested interests or individuals. We've done this enough times where we see that. I've actually had board members say, oh, we hope with the strategic plan it will get this built into it. And as we know, none of us has any power by ourselves. It has to be the consensus of the entire group. And unfortunately, in that case for that one board member, we came up with a phenomenal plan for them. It just did not include that one pet project that they wanted in particular. And that tells us the process works because it shouldn't cater to anyone's. With all the respect to the board, the administration, or anyone, it should be a consensus of all your stakeholders as to the direction that the district goes.
So I have a question about the consensus.
I mean, you said the consensus is like essentially where people can live with it?
Yes.
But sort of what you're alluding to before, like, I think you used bad soul or something like that. How do you handle that? Because if you don't get consensus, I mean, what if there's like a handful of people that say, absolutely not, I can't live with that, but the majority says yes?
Sure. Again, as a facilitator, you know, that's kind of the work that we do. If you've got, you know, we oftentimes sit at tables and you have a whole table of people. This is the consensus amongst five out of six tables. What would you like to see? What would you do differently to get consensus going? And if they can't make any significant, oftentimes they're like, we're not sure. We're just being... We're just being naysayers."
Yes.
You know? They've got a whole group watching them be that way. And oftentimes, they will say, "You know what? We're not crazy about it. Fine. I hate to put it in those terms, but that means they'll live with it." So, but I'll be honest, we haven't had it that drastic. Okay? That was a drastic example. I perceive that potentially happening someday in this day and age, yet at the same time, we believe that asking the questions, as I just demonstrated, there's a power in the group. And hopefully, that greater good, if you will, will win out over the rest of them. And again, that's been our experience. And some pretty tough districts, some pretty good-sized districts. We did Crystal Lake last spring, which had 8,000 students. So we had about 60 people involved in that one, and we were able to reach consensus. Look at their website. I think I may have put it on our materials as a link. Look at what they came up with for their strategic plan. They had some pretty cool things.
I guess, you listed the number of people that you're looking for. How do we decide? Is there like a cap? Do we, I mean, is there like a minimum that we need?
Yeah, well, we'd like to have representation around your entire district. So more than anything, if we saw that, if we did it via responding on the survey, we had nobody from, I know Wythe School was here tonight. Not enough people from Wythe, for example. We probably talked to the principal and say, "Are there a couple of parents we could reach out to?" We'd like to have all the buildings represented by parents and staff so that we've got a nice cross-section of everyone represented, not that any building doesn't have any representation. Try to make the evenings fun. Particularly encourage food to be served to help draw them there. And what our feedback has been primarily from the core stakeholder teams, they've enjoyed being a part of the process, and they feel like they've contributed. And that's an important piece because again, as a board, you're the ones who are delegating that work to them. Ultimately, you're approving the final product that collectively is created, but at the same time, it's a win-win because you've involved as many people as possible. And even the students, and that was another piece to your question regarding naysayers, when you've got some students that are part of the process, adults behave a little bit better, is what we have found. It's the truth. So, any other questions?
Just to kind of dovetail on that, how do you, when you have a group that big, how do we make sure that people are actually speaking up? And just, okay. So do we just kind of monitor and make sure like, "Hey, you haven't said much"?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
We set ground rules. We encourage everyone to talk. We encourage, we actually, when we actually, when we determine the tables where people sit, we put some of your district and building-level administrators at tables. You know, they're all teachers. They all were teachers at one point. We ask them to help engage everybody at their tables as much as they can. And then actually, as the main facilitator, I have a tendency, where the students are at the table, I'll ask the students the questions to go ahead and speak up. They're the ones who like to speak on behalf of the group. And then once the other people find the students doing it, then they're more apt to talk as well. So there's some dynamics that occur as a part of that process that we feel very comfortable with, and we feel we get good feedback from everybody as a result of that process.
Could you give us just a quick, I know you're doing this for us already, but what does the Living the Plan part look like? So we approve it and then hand it over to the administration. Could you kind of just give us a walkthrough of like what happens
Sure.
between that and the next board update?
Absolutely. What happens then is so that you have left just big strategic goal areas. In fact, I've got your current plan here. Your goal is to ensure high levels of learning for all students. Okay? What happens there is we take a look, we sit down with, we target key administrators to lead these goal area conversations. So actually, Dr. Angela, if I may, she was responsible for the student growth and achievement, appropriately so. We had another administrator for the learning environment and so on. We have lengthy conversations with them to say, "What exactly do we want this to look like?" Also, as a part of the key stakeholder group, as we're developing these goals, we ask people, "Are there particular areas that you'd like to see highlighted be a part of that?" We don't ask for the goals, we just ask for topically, what are things? And then we share those back with the goal leaders to say, "Here's what came up in the core stakeholder group. We need to come up with a strategy that's going to address and or relate to what has come up with." But these are lengthy conversations with each of the goal leaders initially, and then those goal leaders have teams that they work with, and it's part of your overall leadership team that they work with at seeing that these goals are being implemented. So for example, we've got a date out.
December 5th.
Yeah, December 5th. I'll be coming out to meet with your leadership team and the team leaders to address where have you progressed to at this point as a part of the plan, based on the timelines and pieces that we had talked about at our last meeting, which we met last, last spring, okay, to see where things were. How have things progressed since then? So it, we call it the Living the Strategic Plan part because this is the part where you keep these topics and these conversations alive, foremost with your leadership team, and then amongst the staff and the buildings and so on, so that it's not an isolated document that just gets put on one of your shelves saying, "Well, this is our strategic plan. We'll revisit it in five years." It keeps it current and keeps it up to date. And by us coming out two to three times a year, we have that check-in on all of these goals to make sure that they are progressing. And again, I'll speak for, you know, your team to say that they all take this work exceptionally seriously as they should, because this is what's moving your district forward. Full-day kindergarten was a result of your last plan. Okay? And that was an initiative that was started there, but it came to full fruition as a result of the Living the Plan and putting in timelines and, you know, measures for success. Where are those next steps that are going to need to happen? And what are those things that we're going to be measuring to make sure it's being implemented as a show? You've got a good plan in place. The question I think always is, "Okay, we've got a good plan. What do we need to do moving forward?" And I think that's the challenge. It's a great challenge to have as a district. You've done exceptionally well. I know you used a different group the last time. That's okay. Yet at the same time, I think you'll hear similar things from them about how you need to review and update things on an ongoing basis. Interestingly enough, I like to compare when I work with a big core stakeholder group, a lot of corporate examples. And I always like to mention, we've got an airline like Southwest Airlines that has had the same mission statement for 35 years. Okay? So it's not out of the ordinary to leave your mission statement as it is, as long as it is demonstrating your district's purpose for even existing as a district. Okay? If it looks like it needs to be changed or modified, then you look at changing it or modify. But as an organization, there should always be certain pieces that are relatively stable within, as long as you're in stable times, which I think as a district, you guys are in a very good place.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zizouka.
Thank you for the opportunity, and congratulations on Board of Education Month.
Thank you.
Enjoy it. Short-lived.
Appreciate it tonight.
Thank you.
All right, and we have one more group that's going to come in. So we have Crystal Conley and Alisa Brent from CEC who are going to talk with us about the CEC process for strategic planning. And it is worth noting that CEC was, was the group that helped us facilitate the initial development of the plan five years ago during, on Zoom during a global pandemic. So it's nice to see you in person.
Nice to do as well. Well, thank you so much for having us.
That does not amplify, but we had small children here earlier, so if you want to move that around.
It doesn't amplify in the room, but it goes for the broadcast.
Oh, I got it. Well, that's all right.
We have a bunch of littles in doing presentations.
All right.
And they were adorable.
Yeah.
They were super cute. Well, we're very excited. So we, we were part of the first time you did your strategic plans. We're super excited that you reached out and invited us back. As she said, I'm Alisa Brent. I'm the Managing Director at CEC, and this is Crystal Conley. She's our Field Director. And so we, you keep going. So just, oh, it's right here. All right, thank you. A little bit about us. So CEC, we have been in the state of Illinois for about 38 years. And we started as a small cohort, and we have grown to be all over the United States. So we are now approved vendors in multiple states across the country. A lot of our work that we have been sustaining here in Illinois has put us kind of on the map. We're excited. We're an approved vendor through ISB, and so we've been doing lots of strategic plans. But one of our biggest strengths is that we support districts both at the leadership level, at the educator level, and at the student level. And we have a lot of impact measures that we use to support the work that we're doing. So most recently, we've joined some of the bigger research companies in, or researchers that are out there, such as Ripple, which is associated with Brown University and Annenberg, where we are working with them on a lot of little R research around the work that we do. So that's pretty exciting. A lot of districts come to us for many reasons. One is we are on many approved vendors lists. Here in Illinois, we're on ISB's. We are very responsive to all of our district's needs. So one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is we are in the trenches. So we are in classrooms. We are coaching leaders. We are coaching teachers. We are looking at data. We, we are not removing ourselves from the classroom. None of us on our team ever want to say, "Nope, we've been out of the classroom for this long. That is not who we are." In fact, tomorrow I'm going in and I'm modeling lessons for, in a school. So it's, it's something that brings a unique twist to the work we do. We love to look at your bigger strategies and help you simplify things to make it practical and things that our educators really embrace. And we don't want to just keep adding things to people's plates. We want to take the platter and make it just a small little dessert plate. And then we look at building capacity and sustainability. And so I think that is one of the bigger reasons people come back year after year. When we look at our strategic plan, we like to think of it as a blueprint. And we like to think that when we create this, we're moving you beyond this, this simple, here's our strategies and goals. We want to create frameworks that really help you grow as a district. And one of the things that we know about your strategic plan that you've had is it's been super successful, and you've done a phenomenal job. I think when we first met and we saw all the dots and all the great things that you've been doing, and I think that that's something that we've really, we really attribute to the fact that when you do a strategic plan that is a blueprint that can really grow with a district, it's lasting. And so we really look at those pieces.
Now, I would say one of the biggest reasons districts come back to CEC is, well, there are several, but I, the one that I hear a lot, the reason districts contact me to say, "Crystal, can you come back to do our strategic plan?" is because of the inclusivity of our process. We are very intentional about the way that we collaborate with a district. So you lead the strategic planning process, we co-lead it with you. So we follow your vision, your ideas, your thoughts. And the wonderful thing about having supported your last development of your strategic plan is we know you. We know your plan. We were there with you. We heard the voices of your stakeholders. And so that allows us to not come back in and start fresh and start over. What we want to do is honor the work that you've done, utilize that, and build from the strengths that you've already grown into from your last plan. And so that is using that and listening to your stakeholders of, "What does this look like now, today in 2026 when you start your new plan? Who are we now? Does this still fit? Or where do we need to really imagine ourselves five years from now, seven years from now?" Because those are the little kiddos that you're planning for. So what is that world going to look like for them then? And are we, does our current plan fit that? How might we need to tweak? So our process is not requiring you to go back and start everything fresh. It is, let's leverage the things that are going well and then continue to tweak where you need to tweak to keep your, your district growing. So our partnership process is very intentional. We have our team who works with you, and we work with your steering committee team to kind of guide the work of your plan. So we do all of our pre-planning with you. When we have our data workshop, where we're looking at data to say, "What does our current data tell us? Where are we today? We're looking at that current reality." That's something that you will lead. You'll, you'll tell us what data you want to talk about, what data you need to look at, what data is relevant to you. Will we make suggestions? Absolutely. But that is co-built with you, deciding which stakeholders are going to be a part of your group. One of the things that is super important in this process is the voice of the students. And it's one of the pieces for us that is a critical part of our process. We have students' voices every step of the way. They're an integral part of our team, and they are part of the full workshop, sitting around, having discussions with adults about what matters to them, what works for them, and what they want and look for in their school. One of the other benefits of working with CEC is, yes, we help you develop an amazing plan, but we don't just stop there. One of the things that we know from almost 40 years of doing this is you can develop the best plan, and it sits on the shelf. No one knows what it is, except the people who are sitting at the table to develop it. Implementation of a strategic plan is the critical part. Easy part is the writing of the plan. What happens is when you get back in the swell of the district, so when all of the things that are coming at you in a day, sometimes strategic planning can sit, get pushed kind of behind the scenes. One of the things we know from Riverside is that you don't do that. You live your strategic plan. And our organization, part of our process is to walk that with you, support you through that, help you think through, "These are the barriers we had last time. How can we overcome those? What do we need to think through this time so that we can be proactive to try and miss some of those pitfalls that might have hit us last time?" We bring with us a full toolkit. This is an elevation from the last time you've worked with us. We have a toolkit that gives you all of the tools that you need to live your strategic plan over five years. So that includes not just action plans, but we also work on implementation plans. We talk about what are the adult actions that need to shift as you're implementing your plan? How do we measure those things? What does that look like in continuous improvement cycles? So we help you look through those things. We give you the tools to monitor, to celebrate, and to continuously keep your strategic plan at the forefront of the work that you do. Now, we have developed many plans over the state of Illinois, and I would say the country. But one of the benefits of working with CEC is the continued partnership. It is the feedback It is the feedback when we hear from clients three years later, Crystal, can you come back in and help us with this piece of our strategic plan? We hit a snag. That lets us know their strategic plan is in use. They're living it. They're using it. It's in the fabric of what they do. And what I truly believe makes a difference there is every single stakeholder sees themselves in our plan. So lots of plans have a portrait of a graduate. What we've expanded in our plan is not just a graduate. That is, of course, the heart of your strategic plan. But it's really important to think through, who are the other people that are surrounding the kids? Who are they and what do we expect from them? So we help you build Portrait of an Adult, which is who are all of the adults working in our schools? What are the competencies, the expectations that we have of them to be able to help kids meet that portrait of a graduate? Then we look at Portrait of a Family and Community. What does it look like for a family or a community or caregivers to be a supportive role in learning for students? What does that look like? We help you define that as part of your vision. And then lastly, your Portrait of a System, which says, what will we ensure in our system? So that families and adults can support kids and give them what they need so that we can live this vision of our Portrait of a Graduate for our kids. And so that's a really powerful piece of the visioning that we do with you. Because one of the reasons that we have districts keep coming back is because of that inclusivity where all stakeholders feel a part of the strategic plan instead of it living in your district office.
So several things really occur during this time. One is the collaboration. So a lot of our workshops are completely collaborative. And I think, as Crystal said, we don't just come in and say, okay, here it is. Follow our lead. What we do is we set up clear milestones and real clear progress that's visible to everyone, but with your guidance. We're your partner and we facilitate with you. And I think it's really easy to come in and say, okay, here's the template. What are the goals? What are the strategies? Thanks. That's not who we are. We want you to go through the work. And so in this case, since you already have a plan that has been very successful, maybe now it's just what do we have to refresh? What do we have to look at and say, what have we accomplished? How much more do we have to go? Or how do we sustain this, right? Because it's not about, yep, check the box. We met this goal. Now it's how do we sustain this goal? So we may have three more that we want to add, but we want this one sustainable. So does it still live there? And I think that that's something that we really want to support and really encourage versus, all right, there's the old one. Now let's start from scratch with the new one. So some of the things that we want to do is we really want to align this with the vision and really take that current plan plus the next phase and create the new living plan. And so when we look at this, we want to really start thinking about what are the needs? So in the proposal, we put everything that we do. You don't need everything. So when we sit down to really look at that, a lot of that will come out because you've done some of that work. Some of it will stay in because you do need to be communicating with the families and the stakeholders. Because some of your families weren't here when you created the last one. So, you know, that's in that piece. You know, I look at it as that's like the big Cadillac version. So now what do we need to pull out to really meet your needs? And so everything we do is very flexible and we want to work with that. So when we move forward, we really look at this in three phases. The readiness phase. And so that is when we sit down with your immediate steering committee team. Like who's the small group? So, you know, your superintendent, the cabinet, some of you, you know. And we plan, like, how is this going to be laid out? What are we keeping? What are we expanding on? How is this going to look together? Then we take that to the bigger group so that they know that you're going to be part of this bigger group. What does that look like, sound like, feel like? When are we meeting? What's in person? What's your homework? What do we do? What do you do? Then we have our three workshops where we meet to refresh your vision, where we'll set the goals, and then where we pull it all together so that now your goals have your strategies and then we move to that. And then we get you started on that living the plan piece. So we look at it in three phases. And within those phases, you kind of tell us what we need, where we need to go. What questions do you have?
So how many sessions do we, when you gather this information?
Like when we get the stakeholders' involvement, how many sessions are we looking at having? And how long are those sessions?
The workshop sessions? There are three workshop sessions and they're a full day.
Full day?
Yeah. Now, but that's the only, that's it, though. I mean, some of the other sessions are virtual or.
Just with a committee, a smaller committee? And we have an orientation with the full group that is a virtual session. It's about an hour and a half, just to get everyone oriented to the process and how we'll work together and dates and things like that. And then we also have a virtual hour, about an hour and a half session after all of the workshops as a final, let's look at the plan one more time. We've gotten our last feedback from the stakeholders. One of the things that I don't think we mentioned is we have a very intentional feedback cycle during the process, which is very intentional. So yes, we will have a large group there and we will have their voice. You will have brought in data from the perspective of your other stakeholders. So we'll be looking at that during the data workshop. But after each workshop, so for example, that first workshop where we're looking at data, we will come out with a synopsis of the data and what we feel is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, those things. We send those out to your full stakeholder group to say, did we get it right? So that's the question we want to keep asking your stakeholders, not just at the end, but all the way through. So then our second workshop is the visioning workshop. This is the amazing one because it is where we say, let's, what's the most amazing thing you can imagine? And so we have everyone really thinking about, if you could design your own school district, what would that look like? And so we have everyone, we have students, we have parents, we have community members, we have board members, we have admin, we have teachers, we have support staff. All of these people in on the team who are having these really rich discussions. So at that vision retreat, we come up with what we call a preferred future statement. Preferred future statement is your mission, your vision, your core values and those portraits that we talked about. And so what that does is it really gives you a robust vision of where you want the district to go. And so at the end of that second workshop, we take that preferred future statement that the team drafted together and we send that out again, did we get it right, to survey your stakeholders. Once we get that data back, the first thing we do at the next workshop is always review the data and decide, okay, well, based on what stakeholders told us, did we get it right or do we want to tweak anything? So there's tweaking along the way from all of the stakeholder voice that keeps coming. And then that third, the third workshop is the setting direction. And so that is where we say, okay, well, we looked at our current reality, where we are. We've developed this vision of where we want to go. Now what's our pathway to get there? And so that's when we develop the goals and the strategies and things like that. So that stakeholder feedback loop is done all the way through.
And that's really critical. So we, so after a workshop, we take it all back. We put it in the Google form. We send it to you. Your communications director sends that out to everybody. We monitor that and then we create charts and graphs and all the notes so that when we see you again, you can see what is, what is the, you know, entire Riverside community see? So we take that on and do that, but we think it's really important so there's no secrets and no one coming back to say, well, my voice wasn't heard. Yep, you filled it out, you know, here it is. So it's very helpful. You know, we have done, you know, an option within our proposals. We could do focus groups, you know, or we don't have to.
We've done community forums.
Yep, we've done all those different pieces. It really just depends on where you think the community need, what role they need to play. If the feedback is all they need, then we adjust it.
So when you talk about the inclusivity part, how, like, what's the process to go about that to make sure that you've got the right balance or whatever, however terminology you use for that?
Yep. So a lot of, so in some of the districts that we've worked in recently, when they look at this, they invite, you know, your cabinet. They put it out to educators, like who would like to participate from the educator pool? Who from the board wants to participate? You know, they send out messaging to parents, right? So depending, you know, I'd say that in the last few groups we've had, there's been about 60 stakeholders.
I would say 40 to 60.
Yep, that have been participating. And we also look at students. So we look at students that have attended here. So you can invite middle school. You can invite some of your high school students. We also look at feeder schools. So where do your students feed into and do those superintendents want to come? Any of the collaboratives that you're associated with within the community? Special ed collaboratives? You know, other elementary school districts that are nearby? In the last one, we had four superintendents from neighboring school districts that wanted to participate.
And we've even lately had Park District leaders come in, especially when districts are very intentional about their partnerships with Park Districts or maybe the library system. Whomever you feel in the community could be good for them to be involved in your future vision because maybe there's some partnership opportunities. As you're going through, the awesome part about that is if you have, let's say, a library, you know, leader in the room, they're hearing all of these things that you are looking to, these areas where you're looking to grow. And then it's sparking in them, oh, these are ways we can help. These are ways we can help. When usually you wouldn't have that opportunity to even be able to brainstorm in that way. So that's why we always recommend like the libraries, the park districts, those people because they can be listeners in how they may be supportive partners in the efforts that you have in your plan.
The last one we did as well had community members that don't have children in the district as well, who just wanted to have a say. And many of them were really helpful to see it from a different lens.
And one of the things we do in our pre-planning when we work with your steering committee is to help you really think through, who are the voices we don't usually hear from? And we're usually very intentional about that. Who are those people? How might we be able to communicate with them and maybe solicit them to try and be a part of the team? Whether it is newcomers or English language learners, whomever those people are that usually are not the ones coming to board meetings, you know, the ones that you don't usually hear from. We're very intentional about figuring out a way to communicate with them and invite them to be a part of the process. Even if they can't commit to the full team days, what we do is we say, okay, well, even if we only need a focus group just for this group, how can we make sure that their voices are still heard and are a valuable part of the process?
We had interpreters the last time.
We did.
And we had a group of Spanish-speaking parents that came with an interpreter and they had a lot to share. So it was nice.
The student part, that you were talking about, students every step of the way. We had, I think, two high school students, high school graduates that joined us for the last time. But I think it was just the two of them. I'm sure it was very overwhelming being in a group of all these, you know, adults that are talking about stuff that you maybe don't quite understand or whatever. It sounds like you go a little bit deeper with that. It's like, what does that look, is it a bunch, or not a bunch, but is it like a larger group of students and are they in all of this?
Yeah, the last one, I think there were, what, like eight? There were eight students.
I was gonna say, we had more students, did we?
But they, you know, it was during the pandemic. It was on Zoom. And so our students kind of fell off. I think they were busy and timing wasn't great. And I think we had a range for maybe six and they were.
Oh, okay.
I'm not high school, but they were middle school graduates, still in high school.
Our goal is always to, we don't necessarily give you a specific number, but here's what we want. Whenever we have a full day workshop where everyone is working together, talking together, collaborating, brainstorming, ideating, all the things, that's why it's a full day. A lot of really deep discussion. We want to make sure that every table is represented by all stakeholders. That means every single group has to have a student. So what we do is we figure out about how many people will you have? About, are we going to have six to eight people per group? Awesome. Okay, well then, how many groups will that be? That dictates how many kids we need. But here's what I'll say about the students, having done this for so many years. High school students are awesome. But when I tell you the best students, especially in a district like Riverside, it's middle school. Your middle school students who are currently experiencing your system are some of the most powerful conversations. And all it takes is for that first hour for them to get the, and we're very intentional about talking about, everyone is equal here. Everyone's voices are just equally important students. Your voices mean the same as a superintendent if you're sitting at the table together. Don't feel, you know, shy to tell your opinion, all the things. It usually only takes them about an hour to loosen up. And after that, the middle school kids run with it. They love it. They will tell you everything that they want, everything they don't like, what they think should be changed. But what's so cool is their voices totally change the whole conversation of the adults at the table.
And I think the high school students bring that lens of, now that we're getting ready for college, here's how this has helped me along the way. I think the only thing they were really anxious was that they didn't know if they were allowed to get food off the back table. And so once they found out they could eat, they were all, that was it. They were happy. They were so, all so polite, like, are we allowed to go get the bagel? Yes, you can. Go eat. So once they got over that, it was good.
During the sessions, how do you facilitate that to make sure that, like, everybody? You were kind of talking about, like, make sure everybody feels comfortable. And like, if you see quiet people, kind of what's the approach to just make sure that there's not something that they're just not, or uncomfortable speaking or something like that?
So I think our strength is in the fact that most of the work we do is professional development. So we run this whole thing that way. Meaning everything is, their activities, it is extremely structured in the way we get people to communicate and talk and anchor charts and post-it notes and, you know, silent reflection time, now turn to your partner, now turn to the three. You know, so we build activities in because that's our strength, right? Is taking a whole group of teachers and keeping them engaged all day to do that. So now we're doing it with this. So we've taken our background of that and we apply it to this piece so that people leave not with walking away thinking they learned something today, but they also were part of a bigger process.
And I would add to that to say that we're very intentional about how the activities are structured in that there are roles for each group. There are structured discussion questions and conversations that are very intentional and proactive and productive. So one of the things, I did a strategic plan last year and the superintendent said, Crystal, and the superintendent said, Crystal, I just need to let you know, we have a community member who is going to be a part of the team and she wants a football stadium. That's the reason she's getting on the strategic plan. It is, she does not care, that's, that's her goal. So we're going to have to be really careful. I said, it'll be fine, it will be fine. So in our visioning workshop, we go through, what are the amazing things that you want? What, what, what would you imagine? And the football stadium came out. But the way that our activities are structured is in a, let's all come up with ideas, let's consolidate, let's consolidate, let's consolidate, so that we're getting consensus multiple times throughout the, the session. So everyone feels like my voice was heard, everyone listened to me, and, okay, I understand why we're going this way. This woman never brought up the football stadium again after that one time. She voiced it, everyone talked about it. And it was a really great conversation about, oh, my gosh, that would be amazing, but we really need a new reading program. So let's talk, let's prioritize some things. And so through that process of the prioritization and, um, uh, calibration and consensus along the way, removes a lot of the, um,
Barriers of keeping people from all having a voice.
Yes, the barriers and the, and the self, um, what am I trying, the, the agendas that people can bring to the, the team.
And I, I mean, I think that's good too, just in general, like, there's always concern about having too strong of a dissenting voice or a group or something, but I think it's good because you got, you need that counterbalance. And if you can work through the, maybe we can get there, or here's why we can't. I think, I, I mean, I think it's better off in the end anyway, so.
Absolutely, and we encourage you to do that. Those voices where, you know, sometimes you're like, oh, we don't know if we want them. Oh, no, we do. We do, because they have a loud voice for a reason. What is it that we need to hear and help them think through and talk through as a group? Because at the end of this, we want all of that to be gone. We want to be leaving this as one united vision, moving forward collaboratively, you know, without the dissension. So, you know, we are very intentional with our process to make sure that you leave without that.
Matt, Stephanie?
Um, I was just thinking about, you know, as you work with a number, of course, of districts, and I presume some of those have been their second or maybe third, you know, plans as, as would be the case here in, in Riverside. I guess what are some themes or kind of common trends that you've seen? You said, like, we've already perhaps done some of the initial groundwork and laid some of the frameworks. Have you seen districts go in vastly different directions? Have you seen at the very least some common goals and missions staying the same? Like, is there a theme that emerges more often than not when you're working on second, you know, or third versions of these?
You know, I, I think, I think you see a little of both. And sometimes it just depends where we are in the, in our cycle of education too. Like, what, what are some, what are the, some of the trends happening in education? So, for example, when we look at yours, Illinois has a new literacy plan and some new different ways of, that they've put out for literacy, you know, based on the, the Read Act and the surrounding area states. So that wasn't here during COVID. So maybe that is something that we want to address and look at because it may not be in the plan, that we look at things as aligned to some of the new ISB processes. But then on the other side of that, we, um, we have districts who say, you know, this goal is something that we're, we, we're just not there yet and we want to keep that. Or we love our vision, but maybe we just tweak these two words because of the, of the language that needs to happen now. So it really just depends on the district itself, where they are. Um, you know, sometimes there's been a lot of turnover in a district, even though we did their plan, but now that, you know, some of the cabinet members are new. Maybe the superintendent is new, but the cabinet has been there. So I think it just really depends on the district's pieces. And to me, that's something we would talk about with that immediate steering committee is, you know, the first questions would be, what do you like? And, you know, what do you need to change? I also think too, that even before then, is looking at all the different offerings to say, what do you need to do? Like, I know when we, when we spoke, some of those family, you know, reaching out to families or things that we need to keep. But maybe we don't need to do focus groups because we did those five years ago. So it just, it really depends on where you're at. And I think those are conversations we need to have as we move forward.
And I would say, um, in situations like yours, I would say mostly the structure stays the same. Um, the overarching goals mainly stay the same. Your strategies may change. Some of your strategies will probably continue over if you haven't finished them, but there may, like Alisa said, be new ones. Like, right now, a lot of districts are trying to wrestle with, what are we going to do about AI? So some districts are really looking to, how do we address some of those technical changes that are happening, um, in the world? So that would be, you know, a similar one to what Alisa's talking about. But, um, with a really successful plan like you have, um, we would absolutely start with, okay, well, what are we keeping? You know, what, structure, probably. Um, how are you feeling about the goals? You know, so we'll start kind of examining there, um, without starting from scratch, for sure.
And that might be one of the first surveys that goes out. You know, this is what we have. What is, what, what is, what is a, you know, we can decide, is it this big of a, a stakeholder group or is it this big, you know, to see?
And just in your experience working with all these different districts, is there sort of a, a sweet spot or magic number in terms of board member, board member involvement? I mean, would you want all seven? Like, what, I know we did it differently in twenty twenty for various reasons, but.
For, for, for a lot of districts, you know, it, you know, some of you have other jobs, right? So it just depends on, you know, the last district I was on, we had three board members. Um, not all of them, but.
Been all board members.
Yeah.
But again, you have to now have, open a board meeting, you have to do all the things. So most districts, I would say, choose to have, um, less than half, just so that it's not an open board meeting. I would say usually two to three is usually pretty much common.
You know, and, and it was decided based on schedules?
Yes, it's almost always based on who actually can attend.
Who has time, who has babies, who, you know, it's like, you, you, you get to decide.
Yeah, and sometimes we've had it where maybe only one, um, board meet, one board member is actually available to attend. But then what we can do is, if it's something that you want, we actually have presented to the board to say, here's an update from our last session. So after each workshop, we can come to the board and give, you know, like a private, not private, but like a personal, um, update, here's where we are, and to get personal feedback from the board on the artifacts that were created if the board members are not able to be in attendance. We've done that as well.
All right, okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming out. Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right, we're gonna chug along. That was the superintendent's report. I think that's another longer superintendent's report. So, um.
But you didn't have to do a lot of talking.
Right, right. Onto a consent.
Uh, yep, okay, so moving on to the consent agenda. Could I have the board secretary please read tonight's consent agenda?
Um, tonight's consent agenda consists of, um, minutes of the following previous meetings. The October eighth Committee of the Whole meeting, the October eighth Closed Session meeting, and the October fifteenth Regular Business Meeting. The Personnel Report is presented. The District Office Supports Staff Salary Approvals. The Payables Pre-List as of October thirty first and the Payables Pre-List as of November nineteenth. Uh, the school fees for the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, um, academic year and the school maintenance grant.
All right, thank you. Uh, would anyone like to take anything off for further discussion before we vote? No, all right, well then, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Kathy, will you please call the roll?
Okay, okay, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
All right. Next up is the approval of our new Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Uh, before I do a motion, maybe I'll ask you for, maybe just like a quick overview. We've kind of talked about this back and forth in a couple of different, um, actually, I guess it's mostly been closed because it's personnel. So maybe just a quick overview of this new position that we created.
Yes, um, so we changed the title and, um, changed the job description, really with, uh, goals in mind of essentially sort of elevating this position, um, support more at the district office level. I want to certainly congratulate and thank Bill Radke for his many, many years of service as our Director of Buildings and Grounds. Um, but we also know we've been talking in recent years a lot about our aging facilities, the importance of facilities, the importance of really maintaining a very clear maintenance plan and, um, just the, the day-to-day impact that that really does take. So we are, um, very, very excited to have been through a really thorough, um, interview process. And Zachary Proz is here with us tonight, actually. Um, so after the vote, perhaps he can say a few words. And, um, um, so yeah, we're, we're excited about where this is going to go. I know, talking to Zachary tonight, we were saying that he will have an office at the district office. Um, Bill Radke's office is in our maintenance garage. But again, just, uh, with a clear goal to turn, turn this more into like a really proactive, um, role that can really examine things before they become a problem, hopefully most of the time. Um, and just more communication also with our building level leaders. I know our principals, um, often feel that they have a lot of facilities work that sort of lands on their plate. I know there's some reality in that, but really would like to, um, relieve them of some of those duties and responsibilities. So, um, really excited to have, uh, Zachary joining us.
Thank you for that. Uh, so is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six Contract for the Director of Facilities and Maintenance for Zachary Proz with a start date of December first, twenty twenty five, as presented? Kathy, can you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, all right.
Zachary's here, he's gonna come say a few words.
Martha didn't tell you to write a speech?
Hour and forty-five minutes of him.
He's an opportunity and I'm looking forward to work well and I just want to be able to. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want me to say a little thing about myself?
Um, I'll, I'll say, I mean, so Zachary lives in North Riverside, so we're also, um, struck by his proximity to the, to the district because things do come up and, uh, sometimes it's very early mornings or late nights that might be needed when we have facilities issues. So we appreciate that. Um, Zachary's been most recently in Mannheim School District, so also is coming to us with, um, specific school district experience that we really appreciate. His own kids go to Comarke School District right next door, right?
Correct, they have a thirteen-year-old, uh, Zola Proz and a nine-year-old Harlem Proz, so.
Well, welcome. I'm personally, I just, I'm excited about that. We've been talking about facilities since the day I joined the board, since before I joined the board. And we've done a lot of work here, but as you are probably aware, we have very old buildings and Mark makes us very aware of that in his, uh, tenure with us too. So being, being very strategic about what's going to break before it actually breaks. And from time to time, stuff breaks and we don't expect it. So I, I think this is a good position to have to just really be a little bit more high level on, on kind of what we have done in the past, so welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, uh, with that, Riverside Education Council, no comment tonight? Nope, okay. Uh, board member comments? We had a play tonight.
We did.
Did anybody go to play tonight?
Not tonight's show, but previous.
Some part of tonight's show.
Oh, okay. I wanted to call out, uh, Casmira left, but, uh, at, uh, Blythe Park last night, we had a book club. It was the second meeting, second of three, where we talked about the book, The Anxious Generation. I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend the first meeting, which apparently I think there were thirty parents there. Last night it was maybe about half that. Um, but we talked about safetyism, we talked about, uh, the, the right to play and, and a lot of conversation on the parents' part about, about the right to play law and how that's implemented and does it apply to middle school, does it apply to elementary? So a lot of good conversation back and forth, and I really appreciate her instituting that, bringing that up, and, and hopefully that's something that can be, that can happen again, uh, or happen at other schools. But it was really, it was a great book. If you haven't read it, 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 uh, it has so many insights, that, uh, so many things like, oh, so that's where that comes from. Um, so I highly recommend the book and I would recommend having that kind of discussion with, uh, with parents, uh, at other schools as well in the future.
I had a lot of people recommend that book, actually. I should probably get it and read it. I've heard a lot of positive reviews about it, so you, it sounds like you liked it. It was a pretty engaging discussion.
I did, I did. There's, there's one particular thing where, uh, you know, I'll, I'll put on my Cub Scout hat just for a second. When our, when our den came up with a cheer this year, our den's kind of about fifty-fifty girls and boys, and the girls voted overwhelmingly to say, beans! And I'm like, what, what on earth, why are they saying that? Okay, sure, it's beans. And then like, I'm reading about things, okay, and like, and an online influencer, a female online influencer says, beans! I'm like, oh, wow. Now I know.
All right, I might, I might have to pick up that book.
Central's wrapping up, they're one book, one school. This whole week's in spirit week, so the kids are all dressing up and having a lot of fun. Pretty engaging.
Um, I, just general comment on kind of board business stuff. Matt and I attended all three of the, uh, commissions, I always call them committees, the commissions around our Blythe Park thing. Dan joined us for the landscape one and, uh, the board packet's out there. If you want to read through stuff that's sent over to the trustees, they're going to be discussing that tomorrow. And so at some point soon, we should probably have some feedback, or I guess we'll know tomorrow which direction the trustees go or what kind of feedback comments they have. Um, so I'll be at parent-teacher conferences tomorrow until, from like, I don't know, five-thirty to eight PM, because I have two of them here. It's just six minutes, over eighteen periods adds up to a lot of time. So I don't think I'm gonna be able to go, but, uh, I'm definitely interested to see what, what happens tomorrow and, and what direction we get on how we, how we move forward with this thing, so.
I should be there tomorrow to listen in.
You gonna give me a live stream during, during parent-teacher comments? All right, cool, all right. Uh, old business, tax levy, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to adopt the resolution approving the twenty twenty five tax levy? Uh, Kathy, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, no new business tonight and no new, no additional public comment. Um, so future meeting dates, I'm not going to go through every single one of these. December third, Committee of the Whole, seven PM at the multipurpose room at Central. December seventeenth, Regular Business Meeting at seven PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Uh, January seventh, we will be having a Committee of the Whole meeting because this year it's actually the week, uh, that, that meeting is usually during winter break. This year it's not. And then the twenty, January twenty first, we'll have a Regular Business Meeting at seven PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Skipping a few dates, April first will be canceled because this year, April first is going to be during spring break. So essentially, we're bringing January seventh back and we're canceling April first. So net equal meetings, just, uh, different timing on, on how we do it based on how the calendar fell this year. Uh, and with that, that is it, and this meeting is adjourned.